All right, good evening, folks. Thank you for being here for the August 14th meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Education. I'd like to welcome you here and call this meeting to order. Tonight, the Owen High School Junior ROTC program will be presenting our colors. So if you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry it. Coach. Right fist. And half step forward. March.
If you'd remain standing, you please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you, and please be seated. All right, next we have the approval of the agenda. I have one item I'd like to move from the consent agenda to the action agenda, and that will be the contract proposal renewal for the Eblin Intermediate School. Everything else will stay on the consent agenda. Do I have motion to approve?
I move that we approve.
There a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor say aye.
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 All right, so Dr. Baldwin.
Good evening, everyone. Tools for Schools for the sixth consecutive year. And I want to start out by thanking some very special sponsors for that event. That was Evelyn Charities, Ingles, WLOS, Asheville Citizen Times, and Clear Channel. They teamed up to provide Tools for School Drive. And so, once again, I just told WLOS, I don't know if there's any way to truly thank our community. What a giving, generous community that we live in here. Once again, they reported that they collected over 1 million items. Now, I really do pity the poor person who's sitting there in those two trailers, counting one by one to reach a million, but evidently they did. So this is a consecutive years that we've done that. I can tell you that they had almost two full trailer loads of supplies. That was just awesome. You're going to hear a special presentation from Casey Blake with the Asheville Citizen Times. Casey had researched, and I'm going to say up close and personal, a challenge in our community regarding homelessness. And many of the individuals that she actually spoke with and observed, many of those individuals were our own students. So clearly, there is a need in this community for that generosity and that drive to take place. And it's not just Tools for Schools. I know this is happening all across Buncombe County. I know there's a network of churches that have worked hard to provide backpacks. United Way has also entered into that assistance as well. So again, we're just so thankful. And Bill Murdock and those key business sponsors for Tools for Schools, again, they're just incredible, just incredible resources. Wednesday morning at AC Reynolds Middle School, we actually started the Tools for Schools that morning at 4:30. And I didn't make it at 4:30, I'll be honest, but I made it right around 5 o'clock. And there had already been some cars that had come through the Ingles parking lot. I did leave at around 8 o'clock, and I went to Reynolds Middle, where we were hosting a global education and STEM conference. And I'm so proud to report that that was a regional conference for the state. It was facilitated by Worldview, which is one of the key organizations that provides us global ed resources, especially professional development for our teachers. It's through UNC Chapel Hill, I'm very proud to say that. And they did a wonderful job. We had a number of our staff that worked so very hard at putting that together. We had over 400 participants. And what I'm also very proud to say is that easily 300-plus were our own teachers from Buncombe County schools. And as I told the group when I welcomed them, for me, and that is one of our three key, what we used to call initiatives, I think they're just programs of emphasis now on Buncombe County schools. The global education, our STEM integration across the curriculum, and our technology enhancement. But I'm so proud to see that kind of response from our own staff, because what that tells me is it truly is no longer an initiative. It has become a core value in Buncombe County schools, as it well should be, for us to prepare our young people for a successful career in the 21st century. I do want to recognize Mrs. Lopez. I want to recognize Dr. Sherri Boone. They put in countless hours to make this happen for us. And I don't see Jamie Johnson, the Dr. Johnson, the principal at Reynolds Middle, but I think some of you can relate to our first day of school, of course, is next Wednesday. And can you imagine 400 people invading your campus this late, trying to prepare for the school year? So thank her, I want to thank her very much. And board, I had an opportunity to see two student dance groups from Emma Elementary. They just blew the entire audience away. So they did native dance, and we're going to invite them to perform for you and the public. What a great representation of what global awareness truly is. And I think you're going to enjoy that. We've just got to schedule them. I think they are hot item now. They may go, they're going YouTube, and who knows where from there. Martin L. Nesbit Junior Discovery Academy. If you have not had the chance to walk, once you leave these doors, turn left, and that is the area for our new Discovery Academy. If you've not had a opportunity to walk through, certainly if our board meeting does not go into long hours, I would encourage you to walk through. We're so proud of that facility. And again, it's set to open next Wednesday. And similar to global education and technology enhancement, it's that local program of emphasis that I think as professionals in this community will must continue to move forward for our students. Board, I think several of you had an opportunity at least to walk through, and perhaps a little bit later, we'll have an actual guided tour. Mr. Fairley was like that expectant dad as all those parents came, and I could see him beaming with pride. He's done a tremendous job of designing that facility. It is hard to believe that the start of the new school year is just around the corner. And earlier today, at Owen High School, we welcomed 250 new certified employees to Buncombe County schools. And 100 of those, approximately 100, were brand-new teachers. So they are very excited, and we all wish them just the best experience for them for next week. I want to talk with you a little bit about the budget. I'm going to give you, in as concise a manner, an update. As many of you know, Governor McCoy signed the budget 2014-15 into law on August 7th. Overall, the budget represents, at least from a dollar standpoint, I think the best way that I can describe it is it is a balanced budget. And let me define that. It's balanced because I think funding allocations and reductions, for a positive, you have a negative, for a negative, you have a positive. Compared to last year, when you look at public education funds, that budget did increase the total amount statewide by .73 percent. And there's been a lot of controversy over the past few years. Did the budget actually increase funds? Did it decrease? But we got this from our Department of Public Instruction. So there was a .73 percent increase. On the positive side, every employee within our school system will see some type of increase. A new salary scale has now been put in place. It reduces from 37 steps to six steps. And it was highlighted by classroom teachers and certified support staff gaining an average of 7 percent. Now, that calculated average of 7 percent included, and many of you may have heard this through the media or read it through the media, but it also included for those veteran teachers and staff, 10 or more years of employment. Their longevity supplement is rolled into that new salary figure. So if we take that into consideration, that particular percentage goes from 7 percent to approximately 5.6 percent. For those teacher and certified support staff that had more than 30 years' experience, because that's where the scales led up to, if they exceeded 30 years, then they will receive a one-time supplement of $1,000. That's a supplement of 1,000. It's not attached to the base salary, it's simply a supplement. Principals and assistant principals in our school system also received a new salary scale, and it reflected an average across the board of a 2 percent step increase. So if a school-based administrator did not qualify for that step increase, because those steps are based upon a particular number of years, or if they exceeded that scale, number of years on the scale, then he or she, that administrator, will receive a salary base increase of $809. So that $809 actually is put on top of their base salary. This can get really confusing. I'm trying to keep it as simple as possible. All central office-based staff, as well as any non-certified staff, teacher assistants, cafeteria staff, bus drivers, or among the non-certified staff, they will receive an increase of their salary base of $500. So our personnel department, our finance department, I think that budget, I told somebody, I believe that budget was released at about 11 o'clock PM on a certain night. I'd actually gone to sleep at 10, and something woke me up at 1 o'clock in the morning, and all I could see in my head was budget. So I actually got up and saw it, and I think that was also occurring in several homes of our staff here, especially our finance and our personnel, as we really tried to move on this as early as possible. Beyond the salary increases, the General Assembly, and again, these are positives, they reinstated the original kindergarten and first-grade teacher allotment formula. And that was important for us, because as you know, up to that point in time, we were scheduled to lose actually 12 and 1/2 teaching positions. So that was reinstated. This will help greatly to offset our teacher-assistant funding reductions. And that is in the negative category, and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a few seconds. Also positive, our new STEM school, the Martin L. Nesbit Junior Discovery Academy. I'm very proud to say that. It did receive state funding as a cooperative and innovative high school. That's similar to our early college that we have here in Buncombe County. And we also saw a slight increase in the state textbook allotment, again, from the state. Now, on the negative side of the budget, our teacher-assistant funds were reduced by 22 percent. And 22 percent for us in Buncombe County is equated to $1.6 million. I want to thank our commissioners publicly once again, this is the second year in a row, that they have allowed us the flexibility to use local allocation that was approved for those K1 anticipated reduction, teacher reductions, to be applied to our K3 assistant allotment. Some of you that have been here over the past four years, you have heard this superintendent on a soapbox talking about the importance of kindergarten through third grade. I was very pleased to see the state agreed, and as a result, that's what "read to achieve" essentially says. Now, it has some other implications, and I didn't go past how important that foundation was. But again, we've seen over and over, as we looked in our graduation initiative, if we looked at dropout percentages, and we actually looked at permanent records of students over the past several years that have left our school system, it was clear, the one clear pattern was the importance of having that solid, balanced literacy foundation K3. First and foremost, I want to make sure everyone understands that any teacher assistant in K3 previously that wants to remain employed is employed. So we were able to keep our personnel employed in positions. Now that said, we did have a loss in positions, K3, teaching assistants. And that is approximately 30 and 1/2 positions. Because the dollars, even looking at what was provided in the change in the teacher ratio, it just doesn't equal out. So there is a loss of positions. Now, this is certainly something that we're not used to. Over the past six years, I can proudly say that these type of cuts have come our way. But first and foremost, we've been able to keep our personnel employed. At least we've made every effort to, and with few exceptions, that has happened. But we continue to lose in terms of the positions. Another concern for us, and I think, I want to make sure the board is aware of this, that once you look at the state allocations for teacher assistants, there's already 6 percent of that fund that's in place for 2014-15 that is on a non-recurring basis. So the issue of a loss of funding for our teacher-assistant positions is at least at this point in time, very likely for 2015-16. Other budget reductions were reflected in a 3 percent loss of funding to central office. That was $38,888. 1 percent cut in transportation, and that was $76,962. Digital learning funds, that was reduced for, again, these are Buncombe County dollar figures, by $96,745. And then finally, our at-risk student service allocations was reduced by approximately $50,000. Additional budget implications included the grandfathering in of master and advanced degree supplements, as long as employees had completed at least one relevant graduate course in that field by August 1 of 2013. That wasn't necessarily a surprise. That's what we had actually anticipated and had been working with. Beginning next year, no state funds will be used to supplement driver's education. And there'll be more to come later on that. The cost can be set, again, this is for 2015-16, can be set at a limit of $65 per student. School performance grades for the past year, we talked a lot about that in the spring to anticipate that they would be coming this fall. Every school would have a letter grade. That has now been moved by the General Assembly to be released no earlier than January 15. And again, more to come about the grading process, because there's been some adjustments in that as well. We're still trying to go through much of this. We will also be developing later this year a differentiated pay plan for teachers based on performance evaluations and additional professional responsibilities. Now, many of you can recall multiple sessions that we had, in fact, I think even a work session, because we had the challenge of identifying the 25 percent of our teachers that fit the category of teacher for an additional stipend. So we already have a strong committee in place that's based on our teachers, our master teachers. So they certainly will be called back into action this particular year. I do want to thank, as we looked at that teacher-assistant scenario, I want to thank a budget team that we were able to bring in very quickly. We had representatives of teacher assistants, classroom teachers, central office, board representatives. And with their efforts, we've been able to identify some budget response strategies. Once again, we're going to keep our personnel inside this family employed, but we are going to be dealing with some reductions in support positions across the school system. Even with all the challenges ahead of us, I truly believe that 2015 will be a very good year for Buncombe County schools. A significant district-wide effort will be underway, and is currently underway, and it's focused on promoting the many positive qualities and highly successful programs that we have to offer, not only as a system, but inside each and every one of our 43 schools. We've charged Dr. Porter with that mission, and he has already begun to work with our administrators, and will be visiting teams out in the school. We think this is important, and we hope to try and tie in this promotional campaign with the state's campaign, which will be going on at a similar time, because we're going to be recognizing across this state the 175th year anniversary of the first public school that was opened in North Carolina. Now, does anyone know where the first public school in North Carolina, where it was located?
I don't know. Ask him.
Weaverville.
And I was there.
It's a good guess.
I was right there.
It was in Rockingham County. So they have some special program that's going to be set up there. But across the state, we're going to be recognizing that. So again, looking forward to, even with the challenges, you know, again, they're not new to us. We've seen these now year six in a row. We're going to accept those challenges, and we're going to have a great year. So that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Next, I'd like to recognize David Thompson, the Director of our Student Services.
Chairman Ryan Hart, the President of the Board. I want to thank you for this opportunity to highlight an issue that impacts many of our students' families every day. Buncombe County schools identifies students as homeless under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Act when they are living in housing that is not permanent, adequate, or safe. This includes families who have lost housing due to adverse economic conditions that forced them to live in motels, campgrounds, cars, or doubled up with their other families. In 2005, 2006, we identified 28 homeless students in Buncombe County. Last school year, 552 students experienced homelessness sometime during the year. However, 552 is just a number. Each of these students have stories and faces. They bring to school trauma experiences that includes abandonment, domestic violence, or just the trauma of having to leave the familiarity of their own homes, their friends, and their relatives. Just this week, we heard from a mother who lost her housing and is sleeping on the floor of a relative with her two daughters, while a son is living across the county and sleeping with another family member across the county. On a $1,000 monthly income and three children, she can't find affordable housing. Another story from just this last week is a 16-year-old boy leaving his mother's home for fear of domestic violence from a male living in the household. His father has abandoned him and refuses to let his son live with him. These stories bring these numbers to life and touch our hearts. Recently, at the Citizen Times, Casey Blake and Erin Brethour published an outstanding series of articles that revealed the faces and stories of two of our homeless families. Reading the articles, one can realize that homelessness can impact any one of us with just a few unfortunate series of events in our lives. I'd like to thank Casey and allow her to tell the story of her experience with our Buncombe County families. But before she comes to the podium, I do want to recognize just a couple of our staff members who worked with Casey. We met, Casey followed these families for about eight months. Luke Keller was our homeless coordinator at the time, and Luke helped identify the families. Luke could not be here tonight, but he was instrumental in helping Casey with the story. He's since, recently, he took a job with the Department of Social Services, so he's no longer with us. So I'd like to recognize our new homeless, McKinney-Vento homeless coordinator, Christine Kraft, Christine, I was there. Christine will be starting with us tomorrow. So she willingly came tonight to listen to this. So Casey, turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for the opportunity. It's so strange not to be taking notes and to be on this side of the board. So the New York Times, I'm sure some of you are still here, came in 2009, did a pretty sizable piece on Buncombe County schools' homeless population. And our assumption, of course, was that things had improved since the height of the recession. And we were shocked to learn that the number of students had actually almost doubled since the height of the recession, and since that piece came out. So obviously, we wanted to find out why. We wanted to follow two families, so we followed them for a period of 10 months. We wanted to look at, you know, sort of different ends of the spectrum. I'll talk in a minute about these really different definitions of homelessness that the schools and the Federal Housing Authority uses. But we were able to work with both families who have students within the Buncombe County school system. And words cannot express how instrumental Luke Keller was in this. He opened every door for us, you know, from getting us in to photograph the students to crunching numbers to actually finding them for us. You know, I think David had to probably talk a lot of folks into letting us come into the schools and work with these kids and speak with educators. And, you know, I don't think a series like this could have happened in a lot of communities, because we were, you know, almost laughed at in the newsroom when we said we wanted to do this, because, you know, we knew access would be so difficult. And it was incredible, the level of cooperation. So I mentioned these two different definitions. A really big focus for us was looking at the sort of competing definitions that the Federal Housing Authority and therefore, you know, a lot of city and state agencies use versus the definition that schools are using. The bottom line there is that the burden is falling on schools to make up a lot of social services ground. I know that's not a new concept to you all. So the, you know, very quick version of complicated differences is that the Federal Housing Authority does not recognize students who are living doubled up or, you know, sharing space with multiple families as homeless. That counts for about 78 percent of the county schools' homeless population. So obviously, you know, that is a huge gap between, you know, what city and federal authorities are able to do for students and what you all are doing. So the day we met Luke Keller, he was delivering diapers to a family. And, you know, that was, I think, a representative, you know, example of a day in the life of someone whose job is technically to get students to and from school. But they're doing so much more. So, you know, I think even the families were surprised to learn that they would not qualify as homeless under federal guidelines. So one of the families we followed, and Skylar is the daughter in that family, was living with eight people in a double-wide trailer in Fairview. All three of his children, which included Skylar, who's 12, and nine-year-old twins, one of which has autism, were sleeping on the floor. They were taking turns sleeping in a recliner. They often did not have running water, that was off and on for them. So that was an example of a family that would not qualify as HUD homeless. So a family that the school system recognizes as homeless, but is not receiving a lot of the other benefits that, you know, that would kick in for social services. The second family we followed has four children, two of which attend, are in the North Buncombe School District. They lived in a homeless shelter for almost an entire school year. They lived in the WNC Rescue Ministry's homeless shelter in downtown Asheville. Those girls were both on buses for more than an hour a day, which, you know, the con- the continuity in keeping them in their Weaverville schools was huge, but obviously, you know, that's a challenge. Both parents worked in full-time and not able to make ends meet in the trailer that they were living in. So, you know, those are really sort of different ends of the spectrum. One family qualifies as HUD homeless. One does not. The impacts we saw were pretty similar. Kids, you know, there were kids with autism in both families who faced significant health challenges, not being able to, you know, be in an environment that was as conducive as would be ideal for, you know, kids with any sort of health challenges. A lot of kids missed a lot of school. You know, kids woken up at night because they're sleeping a foot away from their siblings or not able to sleep on recliners, you know, obvious sort of impacts there. And again, you know, we saw school staff addressing a lot of parts of this problem that you would not think would be in their job description. So, you know, getting these kids breakfast, you know, helping them at school on days that they missed the bus because, you know, they couldn't be at the bus stop at 4:45 in the morning. And it was incredible to see, you know, how thinly school staff was stretched. So, I'll open it up to questions now, if that's all right, assuming it might be a minute before we see this video. So, what can I tell y'all? How can I be helpful?
Board members?
Casey, I heard the number five. 152. And that is Buncombe County alone?
Yes. Asheville City adds somewhere around 200, so 750 total for the county.
I like to say to people, we have 700 and some odd homeless children, and I wanted to get my numbers straight. I really appreciate what you've done. I hope it sensitized the community to the issue, and I hope we, the spin-off from this is that we can find ways to help these families and particularly these children.
I had several folks, many, many people, comment to me about your article, and were following it and wanted to make sure I was following it. So, I appreciate you putting it out there. It definitely was well-read. Bottom-line conclusion of why the increase, could you address that a little bit?
I think really two parts in my mind for Buncombe County schools. One, the schools changed what they were asking. I think, I believe it was under Luke Keller's leadership that the county schools started essentially just changing those intake forms. So, instead of just asking, "Are you homeless? Do you consider yourself homeless?" They would ask parents, "Are you sharing housing with another family? Do you know, would you consider that you have a permanent residence?" Temporary housing. That doesn't make those families any less homeless or any less qualified, but, you know, just from speaking with these parents, both of them actually said they would not check that box saying, "I'm homeless," you know, for obvious reasons with the stigma. So, I think that was a big component in the uptick. But, you know, this is a problem nationwide, and these numbers are growing at a similar rate nationwide. Experts describe it as a lagging indicator of an economic downturn. So, you know, the very short version is, I think, families are much more likely to max out resources, max out credit cards, you know, tap every last extended family member and every last family friend to get their children housed, and, you know, becoming homeless or entering a shelter is a last resort that, you know, families will take less quickly than, you know, single adults. Is that kind of?
Just for the record, national statistics say that at any time in the year, about 10% of your student population could experience homelessness. So, we may be a little under-identified. It could be, it could easily be more than 552. It's just that we have to work with those who identify and give us that information, but we don't know how many students that we don't identify every year, because, like I said, national data says that it could be 10% of our kids.
Great. Board members, any other questions or comments?
So, just to clarify, Mr. Thompson, you had said 28 students were homeless back in 2005, '06. Was that according to the HUD standard, the federal standard? That was just? Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Casey, thank you very much. We appreciate all of your hard work with this and bringing this to our community's attention, and we'll definitely all go to the website and view the video. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Please. Thank you all so much for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Porter, I believe we have some good news next.
Yes, Chairman Reinhardt. Dr. Baldwin, we have good news. The internet really usually works. It really does, in a state-of-art facility. But Chairman Reinhardt, board members, Dr. Baldwin, assembled guests, we want to welcome you again tonight. And I'm going to introduce right now our driving force behind transportation, Mr. Joe Huff, who, by the way, did an interview with WLOS today, and I got to think he has a second career out there if he ever wants to follow up. But any transportation director, of course, is only as good as his people, and he's about to introduce one of the best that we have in our district.
Thank you very much for that introduction. I will tell you, we did a little spot with WLOS today and really just trying to generate the interest in becoming a bus driver. And as a success story, I think I need to share with you that there was a 5 o'clock spot and a 5:30 spot, and Fonda Durner, my assistant, was still over there, and no sooner than that second spot aired, the phone rang, and it was someone from the community that was wishing to be a bus driver. So, there's some success story there.
All right. Very good.
So, we'll hope that continues. I'm here tonight, and the slide it says Tracy Lee Calhoun Award, and I will say, AKA, that is our Bus Driver of the Year. We select a bus driver each year to represent us as a body on some success stories and the fine job that they do. But I'm going to tell you a little bit more about transportation and kind of ask you as board members to support us in the communities. We want the students to ride our buses. We get funded through the number of buses that we run, our ridership, and our expenditures, so we want them. And we feel like we provide a very safe mode of transportation. And I want to share with you, before we get into this, can you advance next slide, please?
No.
Wonderful. What I want to share with you, if you just come down that, and the first thing I want to tell the board tonight is a success story. We got our numbers back from our inspection, which occurred this past spring. And if you'll look at that one blurb, one reason why we feel like we have a very safe mode of transportation for Buncombe County students is what you see right there. We conduct inspections every 30 days, and one time only a year, we have a very thorough inspections of our buses and our, all our parts and all those things. And right now, out of 100 counties in the state, I got the final numbers, and Buncombe County is the fifth-best garage in the state. Having said that, if you look through those other things, being a military guy, and military vehicles are built to protect its passengers, so are buses. They are built as good materials and able to withstand some fender benders from time to time, as that next blurb says. Obviously, you have all the safety features, the flashing red lights, well-trained and screened drivers, the mirrors, the reinforced sides, bright colors, and what we're working on very hard to do in that last blurb is, we've added GPS, which helps our schools tremendously, especially when buses are late, being able to respond to the community, the stop signs and the arms, and we're adding cameras all the time, trying to get rid of those VCRs and get the digital analog, and we're getting closer all the time. Now, having said that, those are all the reasons why we feel like we have a very safe mode of transportation for our students. But if you look up there, there's a star beside one of those, and that's what we're here tonight to do. We want to recognize one of those well-trained and screened drivers that has provided a great service this year. Before I do that, this award is sponsored by Asheville Oil, and to talk a little bit about the award itself, I have Kay Thorpe from Asheville Oil, and I will turn it over to her briefly.
Thank you. The Tracy Lee Calhoun Memorial Award for School Bus Safety was created 34 years ago by the North Carolina Petroleum Marketers Association to recognize school bus drivers who've made significant contributions to school bus safety throughout the state. The award was established in honor of Tracy Lee Calhoun. She was a 17-year-old high school student who lost her life when a school bus ran a stop sign in Raleigh and hit her car. She was on her way to a part-time job at an oil company in Raleigh. As a member of the association, it has been a privilege for Asheville Oil, Smoky Mountain Heating &amp; Air, to present this award for a number of years to honorees in both Asheville City and Buncombe County school systems. If you think about it, school bus drivers have a tremendous responsibility and deserve recognition for the job they take on every day. It is our company's hope that this award will focus attention on deserving drivers and bring about a continued dedication to school bus safety in our area. As a family-owned business who rode school bus number 113 home from Charles C. Bell every afternoon, it is indeed an honor and a privilege that we can continue to present this award to a deserving bus driver in the Buncombe County school system.
I'm going to ask Ms. Kay Thorpe to step over here to the side, and I'm pleased to announce in the three years since I've been at the helm, we've had a different district recognized. First year was Owen. Last year, I believe it was Kane Creek, and because this year, the recipient comes from INCA. If it's appropriate, Chairman Reinhardt, I'm going to ask you to step forward and join Ms. Thorpe over here. I'll read through the scenario. We'll call the recipient forward, and we'll present the award. So, Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. This year's Bus Driver of the Year is a 14-year-plus veteran driver for Buncombe County schools. She is very much loved and respected by each and every one of her students and their parents alike. Her administration has told me that when they are in a pinch, to do a little more than normally required, she's always willing. She has a stellar safety record and is the most cool and calm driver when under pressure. And I have to say that because I have a scenario for you. Case in point, while driving her students home on Sordish Road this past winter season from INCA Middle School, she had a scare. After performing all her stop procedures correctly, a car that had not noticed the bus had stopped slammed on the brakes and slid into the ditch line of the passenger side of the bus. As one of the students was getting ready to step off the bus, the car skidded by. Fortunately, by executing appropriate stop procedures, a potential bad situation was avoided. The driver quickly asked a student getting ready to offload if they were okay, and they were. She then calmed the other students down so that she could call the school and the bus garage. The driver showed an amazing calmness throughout the experience, and she has distinguished herself, INCA Middle, and Buncombe County schools as one of the best drivers in the system. This year's Tracy Lee Calhoun Award winner is Ms. Susan Only.
At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Anita Owensby to come up. She's our Title I and Federal Programs Director, and she's here tonight to talk about three outstanding Title I reward schools. They are located in North Buncombe District and the Irwin District. I'd also like to ask Ms. Anne Franklin and Pat Blanchard to come forward, and we're going to have some pictures and recognitions.
It'll pick me up? Okay. I like this microphone. For those of us that are vertically challenged, this is awesome. Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Board Chair Reinhardt, and board members. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you tonight to recognize outstanding Title I schools. As you know, our schools do a lot of hard work in the teaching and learning field, and it is awesome when DPI recognizes their schools in our county. Each year, the Department of Public Instruction's Title I Division recognizes Title I schools who are making a significant impact on student achievement, call them reward schools. Reward recognition is for others designated schools who are among the 10% of Title I schools in the state that have the highest absolute performance over a number of years for the all-students group or for all subgroups on the statewide assessments, which for our elementary schools is EOGs. Or, they are among the 10% of Title I schools in the state that are making the most progress in improving the performance of all-students group over a number of years on statewide assessments. Using assessment data from 2009, '10, '10, '11, and '11, '12, less than 100 schools in our state were named 2013 and 14 reward schools. It is with great pride that I announce that Buncombe County has three of those reward schools for high performance. Before announcing the names of those schools, I would also like to acknowledge the sustained efforts of parents, students, staff, and administrators at all of these schools, because it doesn't just happen overnight. As you heard, this is trend data, and it was sustained efforts that produced the test scores that allowed these schools to earn these rewards. As I name each school, with the principal of the school, please come forward to receive the school's platter district representative. Our first school to receive this award is North Buncombe Elementary. Current Principal Debbie Devane asked me to recognize that during those school years, the leadership was under former Principal Dr. Andy Peoples. What a great way to start out your new year as a principal at North Buncombe Elementary. Yet. Are you going to take one of them together?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be awesome. Our second school is Woodfin Elementary. Principal Chad Upton in the Irwin District. And our third reward school for high performance is Weaverville Elementary, represented by Principal Brent Wise. Congratulations.
Thank you for all the hard work at those schools. All right. Next, I believe we have public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. We have Jerry Rice.
Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I seem to be talking to you somewhere else today. You can watch it on YouTube, too, so don't get discouraged.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Blake, for offering your homeless initiative thing for the newspaper. I am absolutely amazed that the board thinks this is new news. I would like to say on Ms. Blake's part that I wonder why that Ms. Blake has to bring this to your attention, because, as your lawyer should point out, under Special Education Law, 94142, under the federal law, under special education, you should have a program called Child Find. Child Find is represented by regular teachers, special ed teachers, administrators, and your special ed director, along with your student service, or anyone in the school that knows of a child that needs help. Special children is in this classification. You might ask Ms. Blake for the names or whatever, and find out just how many of these 500 and something are special needs students. You might be amazed. Now, this goes back to something that I brought to your attention two years ago, and the board acted on it and said, "We'll do it." That is called Exceptional Children District Advisory Council. You've agreed to do that, and you ain't done it yet. Now, the reason I'm bringing this to your attention, if you'd have done it, you shouldn't have been surprised even before or after you brought a council together. There's lots of things I can tell you that would help you and be encouraged to do it if I had the opportunity, but I don't have the opportunity except three minutes at a time, because you won't even let me on a board. You won't even let me come and sit with you and talk to you. You ought to be ashamed. sit with you and talk to you. You ought to be ashamed. You ought to be ashamed to have the news media come here and make a report to you that your staff won't even do. Thank you.
Mr. Rice? That's all? Okay. All right. We're going to go ahead and just move on to the action agenda. The first thing I'd like to bring up on the action agenda is the naming of a new access road at Robertson High School. I'm not sure if the person that we're going to be naming the road after is aware of what's going on. So before we make a motion, Dr. Baldwin, you have something you'd like to say?
I do. And this is a request that's coming from Robertson High School, and unfortunately, Ms. Churchill's unable to make the meeting tonight. This is a surprise for this individual. And, you know, to really make it a surprise and get the individual here, sometimes we have to kind of go under false pretenses. So he's actually sitting here having no idea of what's going to happen. So I won't go up front and preface this by apologizing to him. But I want to read the letter that came from Mrs. Roney to Buncombe County Schools, to whom it may concern. This letter is to state that TC Robertson High School would like to name the new access road currently under construction, McCallum Drive. This would be an honor for the contributions made over the years to TC Robertson by Dr. Larry McCallum. The TC Robertson Advisory Council has unanimously approved the naming of the road, McCallum Drive. And this gentleman, Dr. Larry McCallum, is no stranger to Buncombe County Schools. In fact, he was a school administrator at Robertson High School between 1980 and 1983. He served as a principal at Owen High School between 1983 and 1987. He actually was a principal, we were talking about opening the Discovery Academy, in its first form, it was actually the Advanced Education Center. And Dr. McCallum was the principal here from 1991 to 1994. He was a special assistant to the superintendent from 94 to 2009, and it was an incredible honor for me to name him Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services. And he served there in that title from 2009 to 2011, at which point he retired. Although if there's ever an individual that retirement just doesn't fit, it's Dr. Larry McCallum. Because ever since then, I think any committee in Buncombe County that has any focus on education calls Dr. Larry McCallum and asks him to be a part of that committee. So he stays incredibly busy. I just, words can't describe from this superintendent what this individual has meant, not only for Robertson High School, but for Buncombe County Schools. And I know I've got a few central office staff in here, and I would like just to open it up if any one of our directors would like to just make a few comments. Dr. McCallum, I'll make you sit there and hear these comments first, then we'll bring you down, okay?
I would like to make a few comments. Dr. Baldwin, board. I assume the position that Dr. McCallum left, I came into the position with a different title, but it, same office, the same telephone that we constantly get calls on, the same position. And a lot of times in the community, I'm often referred to as Dr. McCallum. And I wear that name extremely well. So I can tell you from my experiences as a principal and part of this community, that he is absolutely deserving of this honor. His hard work and his dedication to this school system, to this community, is amazing. Whether it's through the mentoring program or his community work, Dr. McCallum has made the lives of many people in western North Carolina better. I don't know anyone that has as much passion about empowering others as Dr. Larry McCallum. And sometimes I wonder what keeps him going. I couldn't figure it out, but until recently. He's fueled by bringing meaning to life to those people around him. Dr. McCallum, I want you to know that you are truly loved, and we understand how much you care. Thank you for being my mentor and friend. Words can't describe how much your friendship means to me. Your encouragement kept me going during times that I often felt defeated. I'm so excited for you to be honored with this road naming. It's only a small token of what you've meant to our school system, what you've meant to our community, and what you mean to me. Thank you.
McCallum is one of my heroes. He is a hero to me. He is a mentor. He is a model. I've told him numerous times, when I grow up, I want to have a quarter of his patience and a third of his wisdom. He is the ideal, and what he has meant to our students and our families is immeasurable. And I have forgiven him for making me responsible for student transfers.
Mr. Chairman, not that we put any pressure on this particular vote to this board by all those words, but I do want to shift it over to you for the formal process.
Having the recommendation from the TC Robertson Advisory Council, do I have a recommendation in the naming of the new access road at TC Robertson High School, McCallum Drive?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Everyone that would vote in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. McCallum, would you do us the favor of coming down and speaking to us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have things happen in your life, and you say, well, nothing can top that. And then all of a sudden, something else happens and it tops what you just said couldn't be topped. And trying to find words for what just happened, as I said, I have to kind of recollect myself. I know Connie wanted me to be here and see the new discovery place and to attend a board meeting. I had no clue. I walked in the door, I was trying to figure out where am I supposed to go? So I walked in the door, watched the kids next door. One little kid said, when they walked in the door with their parents, oh my God, because they were looking at the setting that they were in. As I looked back in the audiences, I came down, I see faces, and what makes you feel good, you see smiles on their faces. I said, I hope I wasn't too bad to them. But I do thank you for this honor. I guess the key thing is I say that my association with Buncombe County School, my association with the people that make up the school system, has been awesome, and it is awesome. And I hope that I have done something that has made someone's life more positive. And so if I've done that, then I feel like Redford used to say, if the big one gets me tonight, I'll be happy.
Yes, Dr. Baldwin, go right ahead.
Dr. Mac, I've driven down that drive so many times, but I promise you, from here on, I'll obey the speed limit.
I didn't hear you.
That's okay. It was a respectful comment.
All right. Next on the action agenda, we have the renewal of the contract with the Leadership and Learning Center with the Evelyn Intermediate School. Do we have a motion to renew this contract?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I did have a question. I don't know if Ms. Owensby is here to answer. I thought that was you earlier. This sounds like a great program for professional development for the teachers and coaching and helping them with their professional learning communities. Obviously, Evelyn Intermediate School participated in this program last year at a cost of $153,000, and they want to do it again. Do we have measurements of success from last year's program as far as how this affected student achievement? Did it increase student achievement? What can you tell me about the success of that program?
Well, let me tell you, first of all, that contract was a little bit more last year because of the services that are provided for the first year of the program. So we negotiated and got the price down just a little bit. And the results obviously are going to be seen in EOG scores, but part of the results are also taken from teacher surveys, and we have the information that was collected from what's going on behind the scenes with the teachers. That's part of the process. Typically, it takes about three years for you to see drastic changes in student achievement. So what we're looking for is other indicators in the classroom that students are at a higher level of engagement, which can be seen through classroom walkthroughs and through teacher input as well as student input. We're also looking for changes in grades for students. But most importantly is the interactions that teachers are actually looking at student work, making decisions about instruction that's driving the interventions for their students, and that they are in their PLCs, their planning, is directly aligned to the standards for their courses that they're teaching. And then they're assessing that through formative assessment, which is another initiative that we're using. So there's a number of factors, as well as the hard numbers with achievement that we're looking at. Some of those are qualitative aspects, and those are part of the write-ups that we'll be happy to share with you from Lead and Learn.
This is a four-year?
It's typically a three-year commitment.
Three-year commitment, okay.
And the amount of professional development, as well as coaching days, usually decreases in the third year. But again, they do a comprehensive needs assessment each year. They're also looking at other types of indicators for student achievement. And based on the needs that are recognized at the school, then determines the customization of the contract. It's not just a one-size-fits-all. We look at the needs at that school site to see what's happening there.
So you have the comprehensive needs assessment data, then?
We do.
Is that used by the school's improvement team?
Yes. And it's also part of their Title One planning. Alignment of funding for Title One is supposed to be based on data from subgroups, as well as overall achievement at the school site. So we use that as part of their priority planning.
Are there any other schools in the district using this program?
Yes. This year, we have a school coming on board. Johnston is going to be doing their first year. Because of budgetary constraints, they are not utilizing as many of these days. Again, the customization of the contract is to meet the needs of the school. And there are different components that you can use in your contract. You can focus more on school improvement efforts or other types of indicators based on that comprehensive needs assessment. So again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's custom to the school.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? All in favor of renewing this contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You'll see we have some information on the agenda, our meetings for next school year, the yellow bus list, some regulation codes, and the next meeting will be on Thursday, September the 4th, 2014. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move. We adjourn?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, board. Thank you, folks, for being here.
You lost. Way.